22-533 and 22-581, committee of the whole meeting Wednesday, December 14, 2022 at 6:00 PM is called to order. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Bear.
Present.
Counselor Caraviallo is absent. Counselor Collins.
Present.
Counselor Knight. Lieutenant is absent. Counselor Scarpelli. Yeah, I see. I see Counselor Scarpelli is on the roll.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Sane, present or not?
Present.
Present. So that is five present, two absent, meaning it's called to order. There will be a meeting of the Medford City Council, committee of the whole on Wednesday, December 14, 2022 at 6:00 PM in the Medford City Council chambers and via Zoom. The purpose of the meeting is to address outstanding questions from the recently completed zoning recodification and to set a fee schedule for the Plan Development District Proposals, Paper 22-533 and Paper 22-581. The council, the city council has invited Building Commissioner Bill Forte, Planning Development and Sustainability Director Alicia Hunt, and Economic Development Director Victor Schrader to attend this meeting. For further information, aids on accommodations, contact the city clerk at 781-393-2425. Sincerely yours, Nicole Morrell, Council President. So as the meeting notice states, we are here tonight to talk through perhaps some Scrivener's errors and some portions of the zoning recodification that was passed back in March. Some portions of it that may be up for interpretation that we may need to take a further look at and actually vote for some zoning changes to update that. Scrivener errors, if we were to address them, don't actually count as voting as zoning changes as they were errors in copying or transitioning the document from one format to another. We also have the discussion around setting up these schedules for the Plan Development District Proposals. That is something that was added in the zoning recodification package. And for these proposals, there's a fee that we can charge. And looking to have a brief discussion on what that fee should be. So I'm happy to hand over to any councils who'd like to speak first or go right to Planning Development and Sustainability Director Hunt, going to Vice President Bears.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. Thank you for outlining all the stuff that we have to look at. If we could, I think maybe a three-part approach from easiest to hardest might be the best way to go about it. If we could start and look at the PDD fee, I know that Victor said that that would be actually, we could put that in the council rules. So it wouldn't need to go through like a zoning process. It's already authorized by the zoning ordinance. Then look at the Scrivener's errors and just get us all on the same page about what we need to do from there. And then the bigger piece, which will outlive this meeting, would be, you know, substantive changes requiring a vote under the zoning laws. So that would be my preference.
I think that makes sense. Is anyone opposed to that approach? So first to talk about those PDD fees. Victor or Alicia, would you like to talk about that? Give you a moment.
Good evening, councilors. Victor Schrader, Economic Development Director for the City of Medford. Yeah, I guess where would you like to start? President Morrell, I provided you with some examples from similar communities. I think the thing to keep.
Talk through a few of those examples, I can pull them up as well.
And I think the thing to keep in mind, the Plan Development Districts are a new tool in Medford. They are pretty common statewide and across the country. Here in Medford, there's no minimum size, lot size for the PDD. So we could see a range of projects. Currently, we're considering a Plan Development District that totals about a million square feet. And then another that's residential, that's about 60,000 square feet. So, you know, as you would imagine, the million square feet proposal takes quite a bit more time and, you know, and attention from staff and from council to work through than the smaller project. But, you know, I would liken these reviews to what the site plan review process. In the end, council will be approving a zoning amendment for the Plan Development Districts. So, you know, it might not be in the same level of detail as a site plan review, but you're going to be looking through plans and taking the time to understand what a development proposal is and how it'll impact the community. So.
And just to build on that, just for folks who, as this is, as you said, it's new. Folks unfamiliar, the very simple form of this is basically someone coming to us with a project and saying, hey, you're not zoned for this, but here's what I would like to do in this space, correct?
Exactly. Yeah. And so the first step is to propose a zoning amendment, and that's what the Plan Development District is. If the project is large enough, when they're moving towards permitting, it will have to go through a typical zoning process. But the zoning for the project will be established under the Plan Development District, which is acts as an overlay. Another thing to consider as you're weighing these, you know, potential fees is that I think, we think these projects are good candidates for peer review, which is allowed under 53G, which is, you know, through the state code. So with the initial project we're reviewing now, we will be recommending to the CD Community Development Board and council that an attorney come on to help out with the drafting of the ordinance language is to make sure that it's responding to what the developer would like, but also is in accordance with our rules. So, you know, that's 53G allows municipalities to hire peer review consultants at the expense of the applicant. So those wouldn't be expenses that we would incur.
Vice President Bear.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Victor. In the examples you sent over, one of them was the five cents per, was it five cents per thousand, 5,000 square feet?
Five cents per square foot.
Oh, five cents per square foot above 5,000. Sorry.
And that's for site plan review.
Right. Do you think, I mean, so that would be variable. It would, you know, we'd have a higher fee relative to the size. Do you think that if we went with that number plus the, you know, is there something that you think we should include in the council rules around 53G? Just to say we, we will, you know, basically, should the rule be, here's, we're setting the fee at five cents per square foot above 5,000? And, you know, in cases where 53G applies, we recommend its use or something like that? Is that kind of what you're getting at? Or should we not mention 53G at all?
I don't know how it would be applied to the council rules necessarily. It's allowed under, you know, our current ordinances.
Right.
So I'm not sure that that's necessary. It might be maybe something to think about further. I haven't looked into that myself. So I'm not sure I'm in a position to give you.
That's fine.
Guidance on that.
In your office's position, would that setting it as the same fee as site plan review be onerous? Or would that be, you know, that be acceptable?
That seems in line with some of our peer communities. I was looking at Somerville's master plan special permits, 2,000, two cents per new gross square foot. You know, it's, ours is a little higher, but, you know, I, they both seem to be in line and are, you know, graduating fees, which I think is probably the right approach. So if, yeah, go ahead.
Sorry. I apologize for interrupting. Alicia Hunt, Planning Director. We were just consulting because the CD board recently adopted 53G. And we searched our ordinances just now. It is in our ordinances under the Conservation Commission. Wetlands has adopted it. The CD board adopted it as part of their rules and regulations. So in lieu of consulting a lawyer at this moment, I would say that the city council probably should look, take the language that the CD board adopted because that was prepared for us by legal counsel. And actually, it was prepared by Jonathan Silverstein, who is now a partner with Mark Bobrowski. We use the language that he gave us and adopted it and that the city council probably ought to perhaps check with Attorney Silverstein, but adopt that language as well to be proper. So sorry to interrupt and contradict you. I just wanted to make sure you had that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
No contradiction there, I don't think.
Are you all set?
Um, yeah, I'll wait for the counselors, but I'm pretty, I'll make a motion after everyone's had a chance to speak on this.
Any other counselors to speak? Counsel Collins?
Yeah, thank you. Nothing substantial to add. I think that's why we're having this discussion. I think this is a reasonable thing to, excuse me, reasonable thing to add into this process. I appreciate hearing about context from neighboring communities would, you know, make sure that our, our fee standards are in line and, you know, kind of create a consistent experience for developers in the area.
Hey, counselors on Zoom wish to speak at this time?
If I can.
Please.
I, I'm excited that we've been looking at this process and moving forward. But again, I think anything we do would, I err on the side of caution without legal representation. I appreciate that someone has already done something for another body, but it's not our body. So I think that, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't proceed in recommending anything until we have city solicit look at it. This is, this is where I find myself in a conundrum when it comes to, you know, the thought process of as we move forward as this council and not having legal representation. I don't want to ask KP Law for anything because, again, we don't know what their funding mechanism is, is in place with the city. We don't know what we paid and whatnot. So I know this is important about moving our state forward. But again, I think we need the pieces in place before we make any movement on anything. And that's right now, from what I've seen and what we've dealt with for the last few months especially, is not having legal representation that, that responds to the council and our wishes. So I just wanted to share my concerns. Thank you.
Counsel Scarpelli. Vice President Bear.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move to request that the Office of Planning, Development and Sustainability send a short draft for review by the council of a PDD fee at five cents per square foot for any project greater than 5,000 square feet. And I would also move that the Office of Planning, Development and Sustainability forward us the language adopted by the CD board for our further review. You can make it one, it's one motion. You can make it one motion also that they forward the language around chapter 53G adopted by the Community Development Board for our further review.
So you're going to read this back?
Yes, please.
Vice President Bear, if you could request the PDS send a short draft of the council to consider a PDD at five cents per square foot.
PDD fee.
Fee, a fee.
And five, five cents per square foot.
For projects greater than 5,000 square.
Counsel Scarpelli, I see you have your hand up.
It further moves to have PDS forward the language around 53G and doubt about it to be developed.
Yes.
Um, I'm having a tough time. Okay, I'm sorry about that. Again, this is just for review with the council, correct? We're not, we're not asking to go over. I just want clarification.
Mr. Bear.
All right. Thank, okay, thank you.
Very good, Mr. Clerk. All right. So on the motion of Vice President Bear, seconded by Counsel Collins, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Bear.
Yes.
Counselor Caraviallo is absent. Counselor Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Knight is absent. Counselor Scarpelli.
Yes.
Counselor Sane.
Yes.
President Morrell.
Yes, five in the affirmative, two absent, zero in the negative, the motion passes. So moving on to Scrivener's errors that we are looking at in the recodification package that was passed back in March. Director Hunt, are you going to present those to us?
Do you have something on paper?
So, thank you. We have a few different ones. I'm gonna, should have just talked to them briefly. So there are, let me put it this way. There are three categories. One is that there were some misspellings in the document and those we have in track changes of the full document. And so I realize this evening that I should have sent you all that in advance to review. I apologize. But those, if I'm correct, are misspellings and missing punctuation, just misspellings. I feel like you're maintaining that document. So do you want to just, what's in that exact version? And then I have the other ones.
Yeah, there's some misspellings, some strike throughs that need to be taken out. The latest version that we have has corrected the references. There were some missed references and carryovers from the old document. So for the most part, it's spelling some missing words that are obvious and things like that.
So we'll send you that online. I have what we believe to be a couple, several other, two that are obviously Scrivener's errors. What was presented to the council and then what showed up in the document later are different. And since these have been being used by the Development Committee, community, we have realized that those actually are being misinterpreted because of the way they were actually sent, put in the document. And then there was an error with the parking code table and the use table. So you may all remember, so let me speak to that one first. You may all remember that during the recodification, there was an agreement that there would be a new parking code A1 that would be for multifamily, that would be 1.5. The CD board had recommended 1.2. The council agreed to 1.5. The final use table that was sent didn't actually have that, that code A1 show up on any lines anywhere. So that's a Scrivener's error. You all had said that it should be in the multifamily ones. So I actually have a document that shows that and I'm going to give you these packets. Sorry. So that's the first page of this is a lovely illustration showing that the A1 is not in any, is not on the residential section. And it was very clear that this board intended, this council intended that it should be as part of numbers four and five, multiple dwelling, class A and multiple dwelling, class B, that that should be there. We were reviewing the minutes and the video to determine whether the attached single family and the detached two family were also supposed to have the A1. We think so because it was very clearly stated in the document that was presented that single family would say it too. So we believe that that is just a Scrivener's error. And that needs to be edited in the use table to be sent to the webpage. The second page has two different sets of errors on it. So the second page that I gave you is a page from the document that the CD board sent to the city council. And it shows required spaces and then underneath the part where it's yellow, that's the document that was sent to the city council, that the city council reviewed at their committee of the whole. The third page is a page from the zoning. And the yellow is what was highlighted from the first page. And you can see that the formatting is different. What was presented to you was a table for A and B. So for right now, I'm just addressing the table and letters A and B. The table became these letters A and B. The wording is a little bit different. And the use of a hyphen is being interpreted by developers as a minus and as a negative. So rather than interpreting this as affordable housing units should have 0.5 parking spots per dwelling unit, they're interpreting it as affordable housing units get a credit of 0.5. So if they were actually looking at the A1, they would read this to mean one parking spot rather than the 0.5 that the council approved. And then again, for the line two, located within a half mile frequency, those units should have 0.8 parking spots per unit. Their understanding it to mean should have a credit of 0.8. So they're taking the 1.5 and they're taking that down to 0.7 per unit. So you can see that they're misinterpreting it because it's formatted differently. So I would argue that that's just a Scrivener's error. And that that's something that we could just change the tape, put it back to the table that was approved by the council and insert it in immunity code.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I mean, you can also see there's not consistency between the N dash and M dash. It's actually two different types of dashes.
Yes. So that, that was, because that actually came to our attention, we didn't notice it earlier on, but because developers were saying to us, but your, your new code requires this. And we're like, no, it doesn't. And then when they walked us through it, we realized what was happening and it happened more than once. The next one there, underneath it says, notwithstanding the above table, non-residential uses with 5,000 square feet or less are exempt from any minimum requirements. This two asterisks, instead of notwithstanding the above table, is causing confusion. And it turns out that we have two non-residential uses by definition of less than gross. That was the, that was supposed to apply to the neighborhood retail.
Yeah.
And the, my word brain just stopped on the other small retail. So we don't understand why that couldn't just be part of the table to go next to those two. And that, that's a sort of a separate question as to how to apply that and whether there were other non-residential. So this actually, the way it's written could apply to any non-residential use that's small and whether that was in fact the intention. So I feel like we should think about that one for a minute. And then the third or the fourth.
Could we pause there, actually? Yeah. Thanks.
So I didn't print out the whole use table. And I feel like it would actually be helpful to actually look at the whole use table and say, what are all the non-residential uses? And did we intend that that is what was there?
So I just want to be clear and I apologize for the counselors on Zoom. But so like, this is what was delivered to us from the CD board? This is what came out?
That's what came in the, in the 150 pages of zoning.
Because this one represents, has that 1.2, which I know is the recommendation.
Right. That is in fact what was presented to you that the council deliberated on.
Right. Okay.
We adopted this, but changed it to 1.5.
Yes. Yep. I just want to make, I just want to make explicit on that.
Yes. I'm not trying to say that that was an error, but this is actually, it's why when you look at the, what the words in the document, we know that you were thought that there would be a table that would show up that would reflect this.
Right. Right. Vice President Bear.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I mean, I think the, these first two are just very clearly formatting and Scrivener's errors. And the intent of the council was clear from our discussions as to what they should be. So, you know, I would move to, to, you know, adjust the draft to reflect the parking code A1 in the A2, A3, A4 and A5 spaces on the use table. And I can hold for the clerk. Yeah, I would move that, you know, we, we correct the Scrivener's error and in the parking, move that we correct the Scrivener's error and place the A1 parking code in the PC column for uses A2, A3, A4 and A5. And that's, we're on the same page. If that's what we want? Yeah. Okay, great. And then further, I would move to, or you can make this part of the same motion to adjust the final draft document to correct the Scrivener's error for the incentives for alternative minimum residential parking requirements to restore the table. I would move to correct the Scrivener's error under incentives for alternative minimum residential parking requirements to restore the table format. And then I'll hold off on this non-residential uses with the 5,000, if we want to talk through that more. As I read it, that's part of the incentives for, as I read it, as was presented to us, not as, as was then included in the draft. That was presented as part of only the incentives for alternative minimum residential parking requirements. That's how I read that.
Oh, so that if it was in a mixed use building.
Correct.
And there was a non-residential commercial, there was a commercial use in the residential building and it was a small residential.
Correct.
That makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Um, we're happy to go back and review the tape if you want. Um, I did actually have an intern who looked at the rest of this, but I didn't ask her to look at that section of it. And unfortunately, she couldn't be here this evening. But.
I'd be happy for that review just because I remember we went back and forth a lot about like convenience stores.
That was in a separate.
I know, but I'm just like, okay.
Yeah, I'm happy for the review.
I'm happy for anyone to overrule me, but I, you know, I'm a little wary to go off my own memory these days.
No, that's fine. And I think the review is great. I'm just saying, I think that neither of the interpretations that were presented before were really correct. No, not to say, no, no criticism intended. Just, I believe that that's only for projects that are using this A1 parking code. That's my, that's my understanding of, that's how I see it presented here. That was my understanding of how it was included.
Amanda, do you remember at all this reading the board? Because since Amanda staffs the CD board, she often remembers things that happened at those meetings because she wasn't at all the other meetings.
Yeah, I, I see this as star.
Yeah.
And then the table and then the sentence, notwithstanding the above tables, residential use with 5,000 square feet or less gross is available for exempt from any minimum requirements. And meaning that if you have a non-residential use of 5,000 square feet or less in a A2, A3, A4, A5 use, that is what is exempted from the requirement. But I would be happy to be corrected. That's my recollection of it.
I'm, I'm happy to also have Lynn go back and review the meeting because she, she sent me some links and timestamps from when we talked about this in the meeting. So it'll be easy for her to go back and see what we were talking about.
Great. So I would motion that PDS come back to us, review the meeting and come back to us with the, you know, an understanding of what happened in that meeting relative to correcting any Scrivener's errors when it comes to non-residential uses under, I'll just leave it at that.
I would second both motions.
Thank you, Counsel Sane.
Vice President Bear, if you could specify, if the PDS would be primed and come back to the council?
With any, with, you know, to share the context around the non-residential uses clause included in section 6.1.3.
6.1.1?
Three.
Okay. And I have your, hang on a second, because I have your other motion too. I want to read that back.
Yes, please.
Vice President, the other motion is Vice President Bear has moved to correct the Scrivener's error and place the A1 parking code in the PC column for uses A2, A3, A4 and A5. He further moved to adjust the final draft document to correct the Scrivener's error under the sentence for alternative minimum residential parking requirements to restore the table format. And I have Counsel Sane second on both of those, on that motion as well.
And the only change, the first one is it should be incentives for alternative minimum.
Oh, under the incentives for, not sentence for.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay, hang on. And then the other motion was to request the PDS review prior meetings and come back to the council to share the context around the non-residential uses clause, including, included in section 6.1.3.
Yeah.
Okay.
So on the motion of Vice President Bear, as seconded by Counsel Sane, Mr. Clerk, call the roll for the first motion.
Vice President Bear.
Yes.
Counselor Caraviallo is absent. Counsel Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Knight is absent. Counselor Scarpelli.
Yes.
Counselor Sane.
Yes.
President Morrell.
Yes, five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, two absent, the motion passes. Yes. Five and the furnace, zero and the negative two absent, the motion passes. And then uh, on the second motion for Parks and Bears, second by Counselor Singh, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Bears.
Yes.
Counsel Carriwell is absent. Counsel Collins.
Yes.
Counsel Knight is absent. Counsel Scarpelli.
Yes.
Counsel Singh.
Yes.
President Morrell.
Yes. Five and the furnace, zero and the negative two absent, motion passes.
So we, Madam President, we also have a formatting recommendation that it's actually easiest to see from the um, this first page where we have background, which conveniently puts the parking code table on the same table as the table of uses. The parking code table shows up in page eighteen and the table of uses shows up at the end, which is around page two hundred something. And it is our recommendation that we actually take out, basically merge the two tables by getting rid of a parking code and just putting the requirement straight into the use table, which is the way it was under the old zoning. It makes it dramatically easier to read and understand. And that, that is just simply a straight uh, substitution of that, and that would be our recommendation. I would put it forth that we would suggest that that could be considered a Scribner's error. I, I don't think this, there's nothing, there's no change, there's no substantive change in the document to do that. It's just an editing.
Thank you. Is there a chance you have one, um, this is a document we can just send to the counselors on Zoom?
Um, the Word document or the, yeah. Oh, this one.
Yeah, that, just the one that, just because it's kind of hard to conceptualize if you're not looking at it.
It will take me about, would it be easier? I don't know if there are other people on Zoom. I could log in and.
Yeah. You want to share your screen? That'd be great.
Thirty seconds.
Just if you could email around the documents after the meeting.
Happy to do that.
Great. Thank you.
But I, I do as um, as you look for that, I, I agree. This is something I found personally a little uh, kluge in a way. It did not have to be. So.
Um, on to that point, Madam President.
Uh, Vice President Bears.
Thank you. Um, could we keep the tables in their relevant sections and then just adjust the use table itself?
Uh, sorry.
Good. Sorry. And I know you're doing two things at once, so I, I can hold off for a second.
So that's the document on the screen now. So those two, the table on that, that the parking code table is on page eighteen of the zoning. And the um, table of uses, which is on the left side, that's at the end of the document. And as you can see, it's just a letter, but there's no reason why we couldn't make this a little wider and put, you know, one per D U and we could put at the bottom, D U equals dwelling code at the bottom of that page. And then the others are all very, very uh, self-explanatory. And then insert those into the use table rather than having a separate full table.
Yeah. My, my only concern is this is what the recommendation works for consultants, right?
Do you count that, Captain? Doctor Hunt, I, yeah.
Yeah. Um, I, all I can say is that the, the consultant lawyer, and he doesn't have to use the zoning all the time. And when we have people trying to use this table, they've found it very difficult. And it's hard to go find it in our zoning because once it's up on Muni code, it's hard to search and find where is your park. I mean, it's possible to search, but it's, it's a, it's kluge and it's, it's not simple. So that's our recommendation is to make it easier for people to use it.
Counsel Collins.
Um, to me, this seems like not a change in substance, but rather a change in formatting. Um, I, I like the idea of integrating the two tables together. I also found it very hard to find, find the various tables, reconcile them the way that they currently exist in the document. Streamlining that I think is probably good for everybody. Um, I, I would be happy to have them consolidated if that was, you know, kind of permissible under the category of Scribner's errors, which it seems to me that it would be because this is not a substantial change, but just reformatting.
Thank you, Counsel Collins. Counsel Singh.
I was going to say something similar. Um, I believe, you know, a city code is difficult enough to um, to work through and understand. The more that we can do to streamline a document like this and make it understandable and more accessible to people. I think that's um, that's good work that we should be doing. Um, if we look at the um, the, the table, it does say, it does already say and parking regulations. And I think, I think because that's already in the title, it would be very logical to um, accept the director's suggestion there.
Thank you, Counsel Singh. Going back to Counsel Scarpelli.
Again, is this, I mean, this isn't something that's, um, is this something we can recommend for just a question for Counsel, uh, Counsel Bobowski? And then get back to us because I, um, it's been a while, but the understanding why we added and formatted this, there was, you know, that it was always with a sense of um, understanding with the, with our, our process. So I'm, I'm a little hesitant to change something for the fact that it might not be just a Scribner issue. That's, that's my concern.
Counsel Scarpelli, I just making sure I, I heard you. Um, you said this is maybe a question you'd like to see go back to uh, Attorney Bobrowski.
Right. I don't, I don't want to be in any um, violation of calling this a, a Scribner error and, and not, you know, and not understanding the true um, you know, reasoning why uh, Counsel Bobowski had us formatted this way. So that would be my recommendation that if we could, for this piece, just request uh, request any, you know, a response from Counsel Bobowski.
Understood. Thank you. I do. And I, I believe that's something we'd have to pay for um, as we're out of contract, but, but I'm just noting that, not to say that as no, but just noting that. Uh, Vice President Bears.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I think uh, I, I can understand the difficulty in usability because the parking code is listed in one place when it, or the parking table, code table is listed in one place, but it maybe should have been listed in two places. You know, I can understand where Counselor Scarpelli is coming from. Like, we never saw a table of uses presented to us that had, you know, it was always written as these codes. It wasn't written into the parking, into the table as the actual required spaces. I agree. It's not a policy change, but I do understand the, the question around, you know, these other things we've looked at, we were presented something, thought we were voting on one thing and it turns out that the draft that we voted on had errors in it. This one would be a slight adjustment to a draft for ease of use. Um, and I can understand that. Something that I think may fall in the middle of that is, is I think to Counselor Singh's point, it says table of use and parking regulations. And my understanding of that was that you'd have your use table and then your parking table, your loading table, like right in the, in that section. Like I can, I don't think that, and I, I don't know if we were presented that at some point, but I believe when we reviewed the documents, we, we reviewed the use table and the parking table and the loading table at the same time. Um, so, and I could double check on that. But that would make sense to me as a Scribner's error if it's all the way up in section six point one point three and not in the, in the table of use and parking regulation section to have the same table, you know, in that section for review, which would be different than changing the actual use table to remove the code letters and include the parking requirement itself. So.
So to make sure I understand you're saying have it in both places?
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly. And I, that's how, you know, again, I'd have to review the specific documents or something that happened nine months ago. But I remember when we reviewed the use table and parking and loading, reviewed them all at the same time. So to me, it would make perfect sense to have the existing tables that we were presented be in that section as well.
I think that would be, I, I agree with that, that, that makes a lot of sense.
I agree too.
Yeah, I would also agree.
Thanks. Um, uh, did, did, uh, did you guys uh, catch that?
Was your final to actually have the table, the code table in there and then actually have the table at the end as well?
Yeah, just like, so how it is now, have the use table and then have parking table and the loading table in that uh, appendix section.
We can, right. So basically add those over to the appendix section.
Yeah.
I feel like there's no reason why we couldn't just do that now.
Right.
Um, it's my understanding that a, a copy from Bobrowski of the, the changes have gone to Muni code, but not the use table.
Right.
So we'll add that to the use table before we send that to Muni code.
And just specifically on the Muni code thing, because I've been in some back and forth on it too. We're waiting to make sure we have all our ducks in a row before we finalize.
Okay.
So.
So I realize that as I'm sharing screen, I could just show you the typos throughout this if you wanted to, to take the time to, to step through them this evening.
I could go either way. I know, Vice President Bears, you have to step out at seven.
I mean, I, I'll push, I'll push it a little bit. I mean, I.
Yeah.
Clearly.
Knowing the building commissioner is here too, so.
Right. Yeah. I mean, um.
Counsel Scarpelli, I see your hand up.
Yeah, no, I, as, as I went through the document, that, that there really weren't major, I didn't see major changes though. I mean, there were spelling errors or grammatical errors. I don't think it was anything that was um, of, of substance. I mean, maybe, can anyone, you know, maybe I missed some things, but.
No.
So there are things that are of substance that we think are worth discussing, but we haven't brought those up tonight. What I have in the document, which I could just share to you, is frequently the, the word the is missing the T. So there are a lot of he's where it should be the. Um, there was at least twice the word or instead of of was clearly an error. Um, there, um, those are the, the primary types of things that we've seen through this um, document. There was uh, one or two others. Sorry, it is so many pages and I was trying to um, skip to each of the track changes that we have in here. Um.
If, at, at this point, can we just throw it up and, and get it out of the way? If there's, if there's a version that's.
Yeah, the only ones I would probably be most concerned about, I thought this feels very minutia, but I feel like the ofs and the ors are the ones that have the potential to change meaning where the other ones, the he's and the these probably don't.
I'll just do it this way. So why don't I, um, if you all are amenable, I'll just switch my share.
Sure. Yeah.
A, a stroke.
Okay. I just wanted, yes. You can hear the building commissioner.
Yeah.
I mean, I'll go to.
Yeah.
While we're waiting to pull that up, I, I'm happy to. I'm happy to move to um, include the parking table and the loading table under the uh, use table under the that section, the table A section.
In place under, again, physical space.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Place it. Yeah.
Yeah.
Below.
I would second that.
Let me know when you have that, Mr. Clerk.
Okay. So if I flip through these, um, table of use regulations is table A, not appendix A.
Yeah, we'll just go through this and if counselors have an issue, just speak.
Yeah.
Otherwise we'll take your silence as agreement.
Figure out a way to jump. These are comments, these are the things that we all just discussed, so I'm not stopping. But then here, be provided within he front yards should be the front yards or, and we actually think it should be the required front yards. Um, but if it's easier, we can just say the, the yards, the front yards. This.
Yeah, that.
And then it's, it's very clear what we're talking about here. Um, there's a missing paragraph line there. That's, so we notice everything. Um, here again, he supply and demand of on-street parking, the supply and demand of on-street parking.
Yeah.
Oh, there's a missing space between that and the number.
Yeah.
Um, so this says such sign shall be mounted. We believe it should say such a sign. So here, um, this one is a little bit harder and we might need to save it for layer later. Access via a driveway or driveways directly the property. I assume it means directly abutting the property, but we'd actually have to go check something.
Which section is that? Just?
This is on page forty-three.
Six point seven.
Six four seven. Thank you for making that.
Seven one. Yep.
Um, this one is on sire retail, should be on-site retail.
Very specific retail.
Um, here, um, and statutes enforced by the buyer chief should be enforced.
Yeah.
Tense. Like I said, a lot of these are really minor. Um, this one is the first of or question. In no instance shall the Board of Appeals issue a special permit to any person convicted or violating G L C one nineteen. We thought it meant convicted of violating.
That seems like a clear of.
Right. Uh, the next comment there is actually a bit more substantive that there's some confusion about what this means, um, but we'll save that for a.
That's seven point two.
Yeah, it was what they meant by um, hours of operation or retail or wholesale. And whether that applies to restaurants, which we think by inference does not, but we, but it's not clear and we get that question periodically. Down to page seventy-two of one hundred and forty-two. Here we go. Um, oh, I'll just note this is a, one of the substantive ones that we will come back to you is that we need a definition of ownership because we're running into some places with states and trusts, something we're working through right now. So that's on our, our list. That's specifically in the A D U, section eight two one. But the recommendation would be to put a definition of ownership for the document. Um, and then there's a, a need to define bona fide temporary absence. Like what, what does that actually mean?
What's a bona fide temporary absence?
How do we? Yeah. How do we enforce that? So um, we just sort of are noting those now for, um, we think this one might, do you think this one got fixed? This is a section reference that is missing. If you see that I have, there are three asterisks there. We think, okay, we think the most recent draft has that reference.
And that's just where G L forty twenty-one D is in Medford's ordinances?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, and then these are some, the references we believe were all fixed when um, Attorney Bobrowski sent us the, the most recent version um, a few weeks ago. But we checked and these things are not. Um, the typos were not.
Could you go back up?
Those are references that we believe have been fixed.
Okay.
Uh, again, an incorrect reference. Um, oh, so this is where some words, this is what Victor was meant earlier by strikeouts. These strikeouts still showed up in the version that was sent to us. So we actually want to delete them so that they're not there.
That makes sense to me. Could, could you just hold it for one second?
Yep.
Okay. Some of that is just like tense agreement stuff.
Mm-hmm. So the version that you all were sent, this version has strike struck through things and that didn't make any sense. Um, oh, this, do we think that this, the development linkage fees definition, they never made it into the version? So that's something we'll put, um, we'll need to see what the language is for development linkage fees and provide the council with it because it is very much defined in our zoning, um, but it's not in the section on definitions. Um, under high frequency transit, um, service that place, takes place more than three times per hour in the same direction during its prime daytime schedule. Um, prime is not a word that is used commonly and to talk about transit, but peak daytime schedule is a defined term that is used in the industry. So we think that there was an intention there to need peak, not prime.
Madam President.
President Bears.
I'm personally comfortable with that.
Any uh, disagreement with Counsel, Counsel Scarpelli? Any disagreement, Councilor, Councilor Scarpelli, I see your hands up, but I don't know if it's just been up or it's a new.
Next one.
Sorry, that was previous.
Norris, thank you.
I'm good. So this is, this is good so far. Thank you.
Um, and this is at the very end. Uh, the sale of goods in large quantity for the purpose of resale, we think that comma doesn't belong there.
Yes.
And then.
We're even getting this grammar squiggly under.
I know.
That's it, right. That's why the grammar squiggly is there. The comma doesn't belong there. Um, but more, the, the last one is again, after, at the end of the sentence yard, the definition of yard, there's a, a random slash that ended up there. We were going to delete that. And that is the last, sorry, it's not two hundred and fifty pages, it's a hundred and forty-two pages.
And is that, is there anything that's in like the use table or the appendices that needs to be corrected?
We have not seen any, right? I'm checking with these guys because we all use these documents, so we all like crowdsource the, from each other, the.
I don't recall any besides the reference to the parking production.
Great.
Right.
Then I would move to a.
Uh, in the use table, there were some highlights that remained, like yellow marks. We thought we would just delete the yellow. There was no intention for it to be colored.
Yeah.
So.
That makes sense. Um, then I would move to adopt all of the Scrivener error fixes included in the document just presented by the Office of Planning Development Sustainability, except for and I'll give you the except for when you're ready, Mr. Clerk.
Vice President Barrett, all Scrivener error fixes included, provided by PDS, except for.
Except for section six point four point seven, access. Um, and then I guess the rest of it, it, I took notes I, I had, so this is not part of the motion right now. I had the seven point two restaurants included. That didn't seem like it was an adjustment. It was a question.
Yeah.
I had the eight point two point one definition of ownership and bona fide temporary apps. That seemed more like a question than an error.
Yep.
And the development linkage fees definition, that seemed like more like a question or omission than an error.
Right.
So I'll leave, I don't think we have to include that in the motion.
Right.
Because you're not gonna, yeah, so we're all on the same page. Yeah, just the six point four point seven, yeah.
And I have, I have your previous motion. Vice President Barrett, who's to include the parking table and the loading table under the use table A section, physically placing that table below the other table.
Yeah, uh, below, physically place that table below the other table.
Below the other table.
Yeah, and it should be the table A section. Not just the A section.
The table A section.
Yep.
And I think that, um, uh, our building commissioner, sorry, I was trying to say Commissioner Bill and that didn't. Our building commissioner had a few things he wanted to mention as well.
Great.
Yeah, we'll take, yeah, we can take these motions. Do you want to take your motion now?
Great.
Um, so on the first motion, what do we have for the, which one is the first motion?
Vice President Barrett, who includes the parking table, let the loading table under the use table, the table A section, physically placing that table below the other table.
You could change the word under to below the.
Yeah.
Just.
We're just trying to make clear that it's, yeah.
It's not within, it is physically.
As long as it's not under the umbrella of.
I guess digitally.
Below. I believe that was a second from Counselor saying.
Counselor Scarpelli, I think.
Oh, Counselor Scarpelli, yes.
Not to second for you.
Yeah.
Thank you, no, I did.
All right, so on the motion of Vice President Barrett, second by Counselor Scarpelli, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Barrett.
Yes.
Counselor Carriola is absent.
Yes.
Counselor Scarpelli.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, five million firm is during the negative two absent the motion passes and the second motion is to, um, in short, accept all the Scrivners.
The dot, all the Scrivener error fixes included, the dot, provided by PDS, except for section six point four point seven, access.
Yeah.
Do you have a second on that one?
Second.
Counselor Collins. So on the motion of Vice President Barrett, second by Counselor Collins, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Barrett.
Yes.
Counselor Carriola is absent, Counselor Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Knight is absent, Counselor Scarpelli.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Counselor Knight is absent, what Counselor said?
Yes.
Yes, five million firm is during the negative two absent the motion passes. Um, so now we'll go to, uh, Building Commissioner Bill Forte to talk about just some.
Good evening, Madam President, Consulors, thank you. Um, so you had asked for me to weigh in, uh, Mr. Beers, if you would. Uh, I've got some.
Oh, yeah. It was like.
Yeah, all right, terrific.
I can also.
There it is. Thank you. Um, if you'll notice, I crossed out section two point five under split lots. That, that's gonna need a little bit more work. Um, Madam President, just, you know, for the record, you know, I've only been here for two months. I haven't really had a chance to dive in to a lot of this stuff, but there are some things here that I see that are problematic and so some of the suggested changes here are going to be substantive, so I would just ask that you maybe consider them um, and, and perhaps have an attorney look them over. So I, you know, I, I'm not the, the best, uh, you know, legal advice you can, you can get, certainly not, but, uh, but I'll just tell you that.
To that end, are, are any of these like very timely? Or are these things that we can wait and consider until we might bring it?
Yeah, sure, we can wait. Um, you know, they're, they're for your consideration. Uh, you know, I don't think that they need to be voted in tonight. These, again, are only suggestions, so, um, but I'll, I'll touch on the most important item, I think.
If I, if I may, just before we jump into the details, sorry, Mr. Commissioner, um, I know you're, you're doing some great stuff in the first couple of months. Um, something that we had kind of talked about with Commissioner Moki and Director Hunt, uh, all the way back two years ago was, um, that what we'd done so far was a phase one. It was a recodification. Uh, there's some policy changes, obviously, but it was really to bring the zoning code into modern era, modern formatting, section numbers, et cetera. Um, and, and I don't think you were here yet, maybe last time, or maybe weren't at the meeting or weren't invited to the meeting last time, we discussed the, the scope for a new zoning consultant. Um, we had always considered a phase two piece, um, and I'm not sure if you're aware of that, but a phase two where we would uh, then look at some really substantive changes, updating the zoning map, you know, I see here you have the zoning map, but I want to hear about all of it. But updating the zoning map, maybe even changing, moving, adjusting lines for districts, creating new districts and kind of taking that more like a holistic look at, along alignment with the comprehensive plan. Um, so, so I just wanted to put that context out there, so we're all on, on the same page. If that's something that we want to do next, we have money for it in our budget that we secured in June, um, and, and I think it makes a ton of sense for us all to be on the same page and having that conversation together.
Great, terrific.
Great, thank you.
Madam President, thank you for you. Um, so, um, the, the zoning map I find is, is kind of outdated. Um, the, the nineteen sixty-five version that the zoning ordinance refers to, um, the street names are all kind of muddy in there. Um, it's not color-coded, which creates a big problem for interpretation. Um, I find that, um, having a non-color-coded zoning map can be confusing. Um, I do have some tools and they're all kind of buried in the office. I have like a, I have a Mylar version and then I have, uh, I actually have a spreadsheet that has each property with a zoning on it. Um, I also found a very useful tool, uh, Access GIS, which has a pretty accurate depiction of most of our properties in our zoning districts is actually pretty, pretty accurate. Um, in addition to that, I found out that Steve Morse was working on a PDF version, color-coded, that I now have in my office as well. Um, what I would like to do is, um, what, what I'm doing right now is I actually went out and got magic markers and I'm coloring this old nineteen sixty-five map to try and match as closely as I can to the draft PDF map that Steve Morse has created. And what I would like to do is, um, I, I've, I've asked the mayor to allow me to employ an intern to help me go through, um, the entire zoning map and come up with a, an adopted version that not only is, um, color-coded and electronically comprehensive, but also that it's interactive with GIS. And so I think it's gonna take me approximately three months to get something together that I can present, um, to this body. And I would, I would like to do that, um, as soon as I can get the draft put together. I just want to make sure that we have an electronic version that's interactive with the public. Um, you know, there's no reason why the public should have to call up and find out what property is, uh, you know, his own uh, property is in. They should just be able to go on GIS and find that out themselves. So, um, that is my goal to, uh, my biggest concern about the zoning ordinance right now as it stands.
Um, and when you have that, email me and we'll get it scheduled.
Yeah, sure. I surely will. And I, what I'll do is I'll submit that draft and give you, uh, all a chance to look at it and then you certainly can schedule a working session as you did with this and.
Great.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Yeah, so that, that is gonna be my biggest, um, focus over the next three months because it's problematic. Um, and I just want to make sure that we're giving out the accurate information. We don't want to get into a situation where it's not clear what zone it's in and, um, you know, that sort of thing. Um, under a principal uses, um, I had a very similar, um, ordinance, uh, in my last, um, my last job that basically says if it's not specifically listed, it's prohibited, okay? Um, uses are, you know, they, they, they do differ and it's something substantially different that I, I agree that it should, it should be, you know, it shouldn't be allowed. Um, but in cases where, um, uses are deemed similar, uh, just because they're not specifically listed, and I'll give you an example, internet cafe. An internet cafe is where people sit down and, uh, they go on their computer and they grab a cup of coffee and a donut and they, you know, and they, and they do their work. Okay, that's one thing, okay? But then you would have the exact same thing in a McDonald's restaurant. What's that? A McDonald's restaurant's an internet cafe. You can go there, you can have breakfast. Now you have a fast food element. Okay, so, you know, they, although there might be the same exact use in that, in, in that one way, it's not a McDonald's. It, it, it is a, you know, it's not that busy. It's people who are business-like. And so it's been problematic, um, to strictly enforce this provision. So what I've suggest, um, to add is, um, at the end of section three point one point one, add the following at the end of the paragraph, however, the building commissioner may determine like uses deemed to be similar in nature with assistance from the planning director. And, and I say that because, uh, you know, um, I, I think that the planning director is probably the most qualified person um, to maybe have that discussion with. Um, if, if the building commissioner, you know, me or whoever's in the future has, has a problem with determination, um, if it's not exactly identified and uses change all the time, new uses come up all the time. Uh, one of the latest ones is the, the panic room, the game room, where you go in and you, you know, you, you have this room and you've got to figure out how to get out of this room. There's nothing in any zoning ordinance for that.
I thought you meant panic room.
Right, yeah, well, I call it a panic, I call it a panic room, but what it is, is, uh, you know, you have this game where, you know, it's like you don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, the rocket's gonna launch off if you don't, you know, kill the countdown, you know, you gotta figure out how to kill the countdown. You know, these kinds of uses are, are they entertain, are they amusement uses? Are they arcade uses? Are they, you know, are they ins- inside game room? I mean, they're, they're very hard to define, you know? Um, you know, a simple thing like an art studio. I had a person who wanted to open up a, a coloring book room and it, there was nothing in the zoning ordinance for, what am I gonna do? Say no? Crush everybody's fun? Of course not. So you have to kind of look at it and say, this is a business use, you know? Is it an arts and crafts? Is it, you know, how many people is it gonna attract? You know, what are the impacts? And so, so I, I think, I'm only suggesting this because I just found it to be problematic in the past and to have the, I think that the building commissioner, whoever's in this seat should be qualified enough to make a, a determination, a judgment as to whether or not that use is going to be impactful and, uh, you know, therefore, you know, degrading or, or, you know, some, somehow, you know, more impactful than what a, a regular type use should be. So, so just something for you to think about. Um, under accessory uses, um, this is another one that I, uh, have problem with now and again. Um, so, um, the operation of an accessory use shall not create a visual impact of the premises where located or to the neighborhood. Any accessory activity shall not generate noise, glare, heat, smoke, and I've added this odor, fumes, or electromagnetic transmission. When an accessory use occurs as part of a business, commercial or industrial use, measures to mitigate all of the above shall be required. Okay, so we, um, and I'll just finish this off, light non-nuance manufacturing shall, shall be deemed an accessory use. So i- in my opinion, um, we don't really have mitigation measures for sound unless it's part of a special permit, okay? So, I mean, uh, your ability to be able to control those things is fine if you have, you know, an impactful, you know, uh, significant project that's going to be near residential zone. Um, you know, currently, I have a problem with a, with a, uh, you know, residential property in an industrial zone where, um, I may not have the authority to be able to enforce, uh, enforce noise measures, you know what I mean? And so, um, I, I know that we probably need, um, we probably need some help with the noise ordinance. Um, I, I don't know where in the general ordinances where sound measurements are taken from the property line. I haven't had a chance to dig into it enough, but I'm, I may make recommendations in the general ordinance as well. Um, but the, this, this, um, I think that this section needs to be considered, okay? Uh, in addition to that.
Just if I'm, if I may, on that section, have you, is this just what's currently in the zoning or have you?
No, this is what I, um, suggesting it should be changed to. And, and basically, there's no big change to the, um, to the substance of this, it's just adding a couple of things. Um, odor is one of them, um, and, and I'll say like, again, if you have, um, like recreational marijuana, obviously, you can, you can make that have odor control.
Right.
But things like a bagel factory, you know, I mean, people love bagels, right? They smell great. If you're sitting next to one every day and all you smell is yeast, it's disgusting, you know, and so those, you know, same with a microbrewery. Microbreweries have a tendency to generate odor.
No, it sounds, sounds great. I'm just, so, so odor, fumes, or electromagnetic transmission, you added. And then did you add this sentence, when an accessory use occurs as part of a non-business?
Uh, yes, I did.
Okay, great.
So almost the last half of this paragraph is all added.
Fantastic.
Yeah, you can compare it, yep.
Yeah.
And then, um, this is another one, too. Um, mechanical penthouses. Now, my experience in the, in the city of Waltham, mechanical penthouses on laboratories have become enormous. They are thirty feet in height plus, um, and they can have equipment on top of those. When, when you don't set limits on mechanical penthouses, and I think in your current zoning.
What a mechanical penthouse.
Uh, so basically what they are is these mechanical rooms that are above the roof line that are exempt from your height in the zoning ordinance. And right now, there's, uh, you have.
Like HVAC or there's something?
Yes, it's usually HVAC equipment. It could be anything, a number of, uh, things. It could be a, an elevator penthouse. But, but what's happening now with laboratories, and I expect a big surge of laboratory to come this way, um, what's happening with these is that because there's no limit on the roof and the square footage of the laboratory is so valuable, um, they're, they're putting most of this mechanical equipment on the roof, not, not only for more space in the building, but for energy efficiency and the fact uh, that, that this is where all this hazardous, these, you know, fume hoods and so forth are. Um, my concern is that when they get too big, um, especially with the view of Boston and Boston Harbor and, and some of the nicer areas here, you could get a conflict where a mechanical room, um, if, if there's no limit, then, you know, and I've seen them have no limit, uh, in, in the last jurisdiction I worked in, uh, they become problematic. And so, again, if they're by right and there's no special permit regulation to be able to control those things, um, they could get, you know, pretty much out of sight. So these are parameters that I suggest, um, you know, that I think would work for any laboratory. They wouldn't be restrictive and they would protect the interests of the city. Uh, and it's, it's, you know, it's right to, a, a person's right to a view, you know, other than looking at a huge mechanical penthouse. So, okay, so, so tho- those are really all the substantive suggestions that I have for now. Um, I, again, I would disregard, um, split lots. I think, um, the only suggestion that I'll make um, is that on the split lot, you have, um, the way it's worded currently. Um, excuse me, just a second here. I made an attempt at this because I thought that it should be changed, but after I read what I wrote, I realized that it, it doesn't help. Um, so we don't want to, we don't want to cause more damage, uh, than, than what's there now. Sorry. All right, so the way it's worded right now is when a lot is transected by a zoning boundary, um, blah, 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 the lot may also, at the option of the lot owner, be deemed to govern in the smaller part beyond such zoning district. I, I think this is a really bad idea. Uh, this allows a person to be able to expand their industrial use by right, thirty feet beyond a zone line that might otherwise protect a, it might have bought up to a general residence zone where people are trying to sleep at night. And so, um, my wording is incorrect because it actually uh, increases the impact rather than lessens it. Um, but, but I think, I think what needs to be added to this is that the, um, that if a person wants to expand into their lot, it should be by special permit. Okay, so I think that's the best way to do it. Then you're not really changing a lot of substance, you're just directing it. Um, you know, you're not saying that someone can't do it. You're just saying that it's gonna require a special permit or a minimum um, site plan review or SPGA, um, or Community Development Board. All right, so those are all the changes that I have for now and I'm gonna work really diligently on this zoning map and get this straightened out because um, this, this is a big priority for, for the department and, and for me.
Could you email this to, um, the clerk if you have it, or I know.
Yeah, I'll email it and I'll take off, uh, section two point five, but I'll actually add my suggested change in there. I'll retype it as it is there and, and just reword and I'll put it in red line.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
President Bears.
Um, I, I'm gonna step away now. Um, I'm comfortable discussing all of that at a future meeting and all of it sounds reasonable. I just wanted to say that before I step.
Sure.
Thanks.
Um, leave and then Director Hunt, we. Leave and then Director Hunt, we, we discussed possibly talking about your suggestions. We talked at a previous meeting, we motioned to get some suggestions from the planning department about what wording might be to go through the phase two of the zoning work we're looking at.
Right, so Madam President, I have a, sort of a brief suggestion that I would then follow up with the language if it's amenable. As we were talking through these and realizing that we have such a large range of potential changes, one of the things that we often do is we employ an on-call consultant. So what happens is it will do a request for qualifications and we will ask for consultants to tell us why they'd be a good fit for this job. And we would list out what the first few tasks are and what some potential future tasks might look like. And then we review, they, they submit them as if it was a bid process. They submit their qualifications, we review them and we choose one or more. Some, so the land use planner, we, or the land use consultants that are doing park design, we actually have three on-call consultants. But in this case, I think we would want one that would be a consulting, we'd ask for a consulting team of planner and lawyer to serve and that the first task that we would include in this would be to review our comprehensive plan and our current zoning and then to meet with the council and the planning and staff and the building commissioner to review what are all the issues and then help us narrow down, figure out which are the ones that we want to take first, which are the ones that we could batch easily and then scope out additional tasks based off of that as to then move forward. As part of such a proposal, we would ask them to provide us rates that they would charge for this work. And then we would know what the rates would be. And we could ask them each time we say, we have this project, can you give us a quote for how much work, how much time do you think this will be? Provide us with that. And I think that that process would serve us well because we could qualify them for three years. We wouldn't need to have the funding for three years. We would have the funding for task one or the first couple tasks. But then we wouldn't need to go through a procurement process every time and we would have some certainty of knowing that we would continue to work with the same team over the course of a couple of years of work. Because some of these things will go through quickly, some will not. That's my recommendation. I think I'll just take a minute to let you know of two other things that are very zoning related in funding. For the MBTA communities, you may be aware that we need to come back with some zoning recommendations and changes. We have just in the last few days been notified that we are being paired up. We're getting technical assistance. There's a well-known planning consultant Ezra Glenn, who has been assigned to Medford to work with us on the MBTA communities process. So we'll start working with them. We'll bring you something to review for that. And we also applied for a grant from the MAPC and the BAR Foundation to fund a staff person for one year to work on climate zoning. And we've just been notified that we've received that grant. So that is very exciting. We'll start drafting a job description to put that forward. So those things are also going to be working on the side.
Wonderful, I do see Counselor Scarpelli with his hand up. Counselor Scarpelli?
Yeah, I'm a little confused, Madam President. I'm sorry, Ms. Hunt, you kind of lost me. I, I believe that the question was that we asked this to go to the department heads. Now, I, whenever I hear the word consultant, please forgive me, with the financial hardships that we might have and not understanding what's going on financially in our community, as soon as you said the word consultant, it just, I, I, everything froze for me. And I apologize for that reaction, but that's what, that's the, the nature of the beast now. So I, I'm confused. I thought that, that the question that you asked, Madam President, if you can repeat that, it was for.
Yeah, so what I, we had asked at a previous meeting when we first talked about the scope of work for working with Attorney Bobrovsky, second part of this, we had asked the planning department just to give us some language for what we might call this next phase. And that is what.
So if you'll remember, we were told.
I'm not, okay, so hold on, hold on, I'm sorry. This is a question, just, so the question you asked is how we're going to call this, correct?
No, we had, um.
No, I'm asking my president, the president, I'm sorry, Ms. Hunt.
I understood it, we had a question for what you would, how you would frame this scope of work, what we would call it, how we would, you know, get, you know, get someone to, you know, work this with us, knowing that we do want to go with Attorney Bobrovsky.
Right, so this has nothing to do with, with Ms. Hunt's department getting a consultant. This is for us to certify and get a consultant for the council to move on to phase two, correct, Madam President?
Correct, and, and these are just suggestions, this is nothing that word.
I know that, I, I appreciate that, but again, I don't want to muddy the water here. The process is for us to work on phase two so we can get our consultant that we want. I don't want to, I don't want to keep, because now what it sounds like to the public is, oh, there's another consultant going on for this that we're asking for. We're not asking for a consultant, correct? That for Ms. Hunt's office, we're not asking for that right now.
This would be a consultant to work with the city council on the new zoning. The, when we went to the procurement office, if we were to just hire a lawyer who would help with language, you could hire a lawyer. But if you're going to hire somebody who's going to look at the zoning and recommendations, you need more services than a lawyer would provide. So you need to get multiple quotes. So you need a scope of work to put out to get the multiple quotes.
So I would actually not, this, this changes, so now I'm just a little confused. So now, now this, the scope of what we thought was going on has now changed because of this. That's what it sounds like to me, so I, I, you know.
Attorney Bobrovsky, we talked to him about phase two. He had mentioned bringing in.
But a part of his team. Correct, Council President?
It is that.
I'm sorry, Counsel, I, I was just confirming with you that that's Counsel Bobrovsky, his team would have the, help us with those, those aspects, not bringing in another one. So again, I don't want to muddy the water and then possibly lose the, the, the services of Counsel Bobrovsky. That's, that's, that's what, that's all, that's my worry right now. So apologize for my confusion, but again, I think that, I think we're going down a road that, that moves away to what we originally wanted. That's phase two with Counsel Bobrovsky and his team to help us with these, these issues that, that, that Director Hunt is putting forward, but makes it sound like we're needing other consultants to bring in. And I don't want that, to have someone we can have at the planning department for the next three years. No, that, our hope is, again, to drive this straight forward. What we want is Counsel Bobrovsky and his team to help us with phase two, period. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah, what Director Hunt is explaining, I had reached out to Fiona Maxwell about this, just trying to understand what the procurement process is by law, by state law. And it is, if it were just Attorney Bobrovsky, him alone, no part of his team that, you know, aren't lawyers, then we would not have to go through the procurement process and get bids. But because his team, as, at his suggestion, would include a partner that is a land use expert that is not explicit, exclusively an attorney.
Right, he was suggesting a planner.
A planner would work with him in part. Then that kicks in the state procurement law where we would have to get three bids.
Okay, thank you.
And one option other than three bids is to ask for qualifications, look at what their qualifications are and to choose the one that you like best out of the qualifications. And I believe that that would be actually a good process because then the council could look at who they are and it wouldn't be about choosing the lowest priced one, but rather the one that meets, the council's needs the best.
Thank you, and to Director Hunt's, I was speaking with Director Hunt before the meeting and this is something she can send in an email to for us to review on her own and, and bring up at a later meeting, just to unmuddy the waters a little bit, hopefully. Counselor Collins.
Thank you, my clarification was already there.
Any further discussion on this point? Counselor Collins.
I just want to thank Director Hunt in your office for going through the process of describing our proposed scope of work. You know, we have a pretty giant task ahead of us. This sounds like years of work to me, which is great. I'm really glad that we're thinking big and taking this on. And I think it makes sense to, to start with scoping out exactly what this will look like, including what is even the process just for dividing it up into similar parts and bite-sized chunks. So though I tend to be an impatient person, I'm really glad that we're going through this deliberative process of first discussing what is this going to look like, what's involved with getting started. This sounds really reasonable to me. I'm, I'm glad that we're preparing for a first step, so thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Collins, Counsel Seng.
Thank you. I also wanted to thank a few people. I want to thank Counsel Scarpelli for asking those questions. I think they, they were helpful for me to understand what, what we were looking for as well. And so thank you for, for those questions. I want to thank Director Hunt and Vic for, for the, in your offices, for the work that you guys have been doing and for the corrections and guiding us through the process. It's been super helpful. I'm excited to see what we do next with you guys. I know we've talked a lot through our comprehensive plan meetings, the client plan meetings, about the work that, that, the, the role that zoning has to play. And, and so I'm, I'm excited to, likewise, I'm excited to embark on, on this phase two journey with you guys. It sounds like we have quite a lot of low-hanging fruit to go, go tackle first. But it's definitely exciting. And I, I also wanted to thank Building Commissioner Forte for, for the, I think, very common sense, very straightforward notes that he had and recommendations that he had for us. I think, I think something that's particularly, I think, remarkable or commendable about the notes that he had was that it's, it's very much think, future thinking, preparing for the development that might and will likely come to Medford. And that's super helpful to hear as a counselor. So thank you all for, for the work that you've put into this. And I'm very excited to get on, get working for zone, for a phase two of zoning.
Thank you, Counsel Seng, any further discussion from the council? Any members of the public would like to speak? Do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
I think we, thank you, Counsel Scarpelli, I think we just have to decide what to do with the papers and report other questions.
My apologies.
I mean, I will, I'll hold your motion until the time.
I'm just thinking what an appropriate motion would be for the last piece of this. I know we're already expecting.
I think if we keep the paper and committee. There's a separate paper that wasn't on the agenda tonight asking for the scope.
So, yeah. Yeah, I think we'll have an additional, we have to have an additional meeting on a few of these items. So I think that can be addressed then. I think if we just report out the questions that were addressed and keep the paper in committee, that should cover all our bases.
I would motion to report out the questions and keep this paper in committee.
So on the motion of Counsel Collins to report out the questions and keep the paper in committee, seconded by.
Second.
Counsel Scarpelli, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. They're not really questions, but it's just.
It was so.
It's the language of Robert's Rules of Order.
Right, Vice President, absent, Counsel Carvillo is absent, Counsel Collins.
Yes.
Counsel Knight is absent, Counsel Scarpelli.
Yes.
Counsel Seng.
Yes.
Yes, four in the affirmative, zero in the negative, three absent, the motion passes. On the motion of Counsel Scarpelli to adjourn, seconded by Collins. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Bears is absent, Counsel Carvillo is absent, Counsel Collins.
Yes.
Counsel Knight is absent, Counsel Scarpelli.
Yes.
Seng.
Yes.
Yes, four in the affirmative, zero in the negative, three absent, the motion passes. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.